Our agenda two forty-eight regular board meeting. Can I get roll call please? Mrs. Gleason?
Here.
Mrs. Bliss? Here.
Miss Lott?
Here.
Mrs. Motley?
Here.
Ms. Sterns?
Here.
Mr. Wickham?
Here.
And Mrs. Ressler? Here, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to our agenda item two, our board minute approval. Can I get an approval? Can I get a motion to approve the April sixteenth, twenty twenty-four regular meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Mr. Wickham, seconded by Ms. Motley. Any discussion? Roll call please. Mr. Wickham?
Aye.
Mrs. Motley?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mrs. Bliss? Aye. Miss Lott?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Mrs. Ressler? Aye. Moving on to our reports on three point one, our superintendent report.
Thank you, Mrs. Ressler. Board, just a couple of updates. We've been watching that House Bill three oh five in regards to township treasurers. Just wanted to give you an update that that did pass the Senate unanimously today. So it'll go back to the House for concurrence and should be approved as we discussed and that amendment was accepted. So we should be in good shape there. Also found confirmation that we are moving back for in terms of standardized test to the ACT. The state was awarded that contract ACT for six years. So we'll work with Dr. Williams and her team to kind of coordinate that move from SAT back now to ACT, which we did a while ago, six years ago. So we're back on hand. Want to congratulate all of our graduates that are out there and thank Dr. Boswell, the team of associates and the building teams for hosting four successful graduations. Thank you, the board, for participating. And a special shout out to Dan Dunn, who hosted his last graduation, Associate Principal here at Oak Forest. Wish all the students the next couple of days, good luck at their end of the year assessments and final exams. They take those tomorrow and Thursday before teacher checkout on Friday. Congratulations to Tinley Park, their track and field team took third place in state recently. And shout out to her athletic director, Mr. Magan, and the team. They put together a really nice little celebration for the girls that not only qualified but then also placed. And it was very well done and wish them to continue success. In terms of a note that I received on behalf of the board, I thought I'd read to you. And here's what it states. Just a short note expressing extreme gratitude to the district's four schools on hosting the seniors breakfast on Wednesday, March twentieth. I attended with my ninety-year-old mother at Bremen. I also would like to thank Ms. Debbie Strom for such a pleasurable event. The efforts put forth to make this event a success were very evident. I think a great morning was had by all. This was by Ms. Kim Thompson and Debbie Strom is Mr. Meany's assistant. So obviously she attended Bremen's, but we were happy to have those back for all four buildings. So I thought I would share that to you as that was addressed to the board and we received that. Some really cool career pathway updates. Give some credit to Renee Mack and Dr. Williams, their team. We were recently invited over to Majec and as you may recall, we started the apprenticeship program with them and we had four of our students successfully complete. They received all their credentials and included like forklift operator. They received PR certified, they did some electrical component work. They were really proud. They each gave a presentation and spoke. We got to meet the owner of Majec and we're looking forward to that continued partnership. But it was just really cool to see them complete that and looking forward to doing that again in the future. Along the same note, Renee has worked directly with Cook County Department of Public Health. They partnered with us to allow an opportunity for our students that are interested in the field of public health for them to attain what's known as a community health worker certificate. It's twelve students that were selected and they'll receive this one week intensive course tuition free. At the end will result in that certificate. Again, we're going to give this a test and we're looking forward to the partnership. Hopefully we'll have more students in the future that are interested and want to take advantage of that as well. Lastly, the schools and the campuses and check the websites are going to have all kinds of unique experiences for not only our current students but our incoming students and also possibly for some of the youngsters around the area in terms of camps. So by all means, look at that. I recently received one for Governor State that I thought I'd mention and I'll have, yeah, as me maybe put up on social media. It's with Governor State University, they're offering a STEAM camp, science, technology, engineering, arts and math. It's July fifteenth to the nineteenth, July twenty-second to the twenty-sixth, open to ages eleven to sixteen. So it does cross over to our age group, nine to three, only three hundred dollars. And some of the activity they mentioned on there are chemistry, titration, marketing, botany, broadcasting, environmental biology. So like I said, we'll post that on our social media, but wanted to let Governor State, who's been a good partner to us over the years, also make that available to everyone in our area. And then last but not least, wish everyone a happy Memorial Day weekend coming up here as we're finishing up last week of school and relaxing, hopefully stress-free summer break. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to Director of Buildings and Grounds.
Yeah, I just had some positive news to report. Three of our, yeah.
Finally.
Three of our building chiefs, Jim King at Hillcrest High School, Chris Lopez at Tinley Park, Eugene Reyna at Bremen are now called certified professional maintenance managers. They took the course administered through Illinois ASWAL in partnership with the associates and facility engineers. They completed coursework and take final exam. Some of the topics that were covered were preventative, predictive, predictive and reactive maintenance, inventory controls, computerized maintenance management software, planning and scheduling, indoor air quality, documentation strategies, training and work culture, return on investment and safety and health. So they all took that course, I think it was a four-day, four separate day of courses that they had taken on a final exam or final exam that they passed. They all have that accreditation.
Congratulations. Anything else? That's it? All right, moving on to our principal reports.
Mrs. Ressler, to kick off our principal reports tonight, we're happy to honor a lot of people for Keepers of the Light and that begins with Dr. Boswell recognizing one of our administrative staff at the Ad Center.
Sean, come on up. The Keeper of Light of the Ad Center is Sean Walsh. He's someone, yeah. Sean is someone who I think many employees in our district know because he is out and about and he's all over the place. He does that in the technology department, but also there's other roles he plays at the Ad Center too. So I just want to read some of the things that people said about Sean. Sean is someone who always puts the district's needs above his own interests. Someone else wrote, Sean has done a wonderful job as the social chair of the Ad Center, which he definitely has. He takes the initiative to plan all of our lunches and is always thinking of new ways to bring a little fun into the office. He's never seen without a smile and is one of the most genuine, kind and generous people I think I've ever had the pleasure of working with. I oftentimes wonder if he's ever had a bad day and admittedly are a little jealous of his constantly positive and optimistic attitude, which is true. And someone else wrote, Sean exemplifies the type of person who adds to the organization more than just the work they get accomplished. And they wrote, there's a difference between providing service and hospitality. Service is simply bringing a resolution to someone's problem. Hospitality is providing that service while at the same time focusing on how the person feels during the interaction. Sean is an expert at providing hospitality that leaves the person he is supporting, feeling that they are not alone and he is there for them. And lots of other nice things that people said too. I could tell you that Sean has not only grown in our district, but he owns what he is responsible for. He does it in a way that builds relationships with everyone that he interacts with. You know, I went to school here, didn't really know what Keeper of the Light meant, but as we celebrate these people tonight, I think that what they do and bring to our district really exemplifies like what we're doing this for. So Sean, thank you, you're the Keeper of the Light for the Ad Center.
I wanted to make sure I did count off the steps. Hi, May Meany, on behalf of Bremen High School. Maggie Unzeta wasn't able to make it today, but a few words about Maggie for Renee Yonker, who is our senior class sponsor. Maggie goes, went above, beyond in her role for our senior class. Without her help and assistance, a lot of our senior activities would not have been able to come to fruition. Every time she asked Maggie for help, the task was completed. Maggie this past year was Olaf in our spring musical for Frozen and it was great because she actually got in costume for our Bring Your Child to Work Day and actually went around to all of our students and was actually able to take pictures. She went into the crowd during all of our performances to be able to sign off and you know, just kind of have that experience. So a nice round of applause for Maggie. Our staff member for the Keeper of Light is Ms. Lisi Rivera. So, um. Jen Violet nominated Lisi and said this about Lisi. She is the heart and soul of our PPS office. She helps everything run smoothly and brings fun to the office. This past Monday, you know, she did start a carnival themed celebration that we have for the end of the school year. She often puts time outside of school to do things for our students and staff in the PPS office. We are so lucky to have her. Lisi is very service oriented. She is one of our community members, her, you know, student does go to Bremen High School. I could not rave more about the things that she does for our building on a daily basis. She's service oriented, she is about our communities and there is nothing more to be able to call her one of our colleagues because she is a shining light of Bremen High School. Thank you.
Dr. Noah?
Good evening, everybody. On behalf of Tinley Park High School, my two Keepers of the Light are here, so I'm very excited about that. And we're first going to start with our staff member, Mary Gable. Hi, Mary. So Mary was nominated by Sheila Lorden and I'll share with you what Sheila nominated her for and then of course add a few things as well. Mary has been a wonderful asset to the staff as a media specialist. Whenever I do research papers, projects or just try new technology, I know I can go to Mary for help. She always goes above and beyond in her assistance. For example, she will create a mock student account so she can sample the program or help me see what it looks like from their perspective. She has done extra research just to get my students additional resources, such as critical essays or authors on a project. She has not only created learning notes for my students to help them with their research papers and other projects, but she teaches lessons to them and offers to be available at other times as well. She is an excellent teacher who truly cares for her students, her coworkers and the community here at Tinley Park High School. So that's what Sheila Lorden has to say. Mary's retiring this year, so I had the opportunity to recognize her at our graduation as well. And what I want everybody to know is Tinley Park High School is going to lose a little, a little piece of our brick and our mortar when we lose Mary. I remember her first days at Tinley Park High School and knew that she was a star right from the beginning. High expectations, but with care, pushes kids, but, but coaches them along. She's excellent with our staff. I think sometimes people overlook what happens with our IMC people and our media people. They are truly providing professional development for our staff, which in turn benefits our kids. She's just a rock. She's done a lot of different things, including teaching and really taking over our AP English program and she will significantly be missed. So I wish her well in retirement and I can't think of anybody better to be considered for the Keeper of the Light award. All right. And my student, and you know what? My student is here and I'm so happy he is here in his beautiful Titan red tonight. He looks so handsome, Daniel Rivera. Now, I have two things to read about Daniel, when I think he was nominated by five people. So I'm going to read these two, when he was nominated by many, many at Tinley Park High School. So on behalf of Wendy Bumpfis, Daniel is a great student. He is polite and dedicated and always does a great job in school. He's a member of several clubs and organizations at Tinley Park High School and is always eager to expand his knowledge, learn more about activities and be a voice for the Tinley Park High School student body. I look forward to seeing his smiling face every day and he never disappoints. He will greet you with a smile and a handshake literally every day. Daniel will graduate in a few short days and I'll truly miss him. I am honored to have gotten to know him and I know he's going to do amazing things after school, which includes, and he will be headed to the United States Marine Corps. So that was on behalf of Wendy Bumpfis. On behalf of Kelly Eastman, Daniel has made tremendous growth since his first years at Tinley Park High School. He's developed a strong sense of resilience and adaptability, which will help him navigate both school and life in general. Trusting others and being open to feedback can be challenging for many people, so it's so impressive that Daniel has been able to learn and accept and embrace aspects of the Tinley Park culture. Daniel has always been using staff for feedback and striving for personal growth. Not only has this benefited him, but it has also created a supportive and encouraging environment for his peers. Daniel has grown into somebody who is dedicated to self-improvement and actively contributes to the well-being of those around him. We can't wait to see where this level of character and determination will continue to serve him in the future. We're very proud of you, Daniel. Now, I, like I said, I could stand up here and go on and on. I nominated, the whole administrative team nominated him actually because he is somebody that again, we will absolutely miss every single day. In fact, I just got an email from him the other day and he just said, hey, thanks for being the principal. You did a great job for the seniors. And I'm like, I mean, who, you don't get many emails like that, you know? He's just, like I said, the smile, the character, the determination. He's polite, he's respectful and he's really made a difference with not only our groups, but his peers as well. And obviously I couldn't be more proud that he's going to go serve us in the Marine Corps. So we wish you the best, be safe. We love you and we'll. Erin, Ms. Ford. Oh, Ms. Ford, Ms. Collins. It happened. I have cold medicine. You'll always be Erin Ford to me.
That's all right, I'll take that. Thank you. Hi, everyone, good evening from Delta Academy. I have two individuals that I'll be nominating and recognizing tonight as well. Unfortunately, our student is unable to come, so I'm going to recognize him first. I think I've told you guys before, when we have our students that come over to us as juniors and seniors, we really do have such a beautiful opportunity to see them in a different light and kind of see how they've grown before they got to us. So we get them in a little bit of more mature, I feel like, aspect. One of the students who spoke to us this year is Sean Loceano. And I just want to tell a story we were talking about in one of our team meetings and that's how we decided he was going to be our Keeper of the Light. Sean came to us and was very mellow. He's graduated last night, he's not with us right now, but he was very mellow all school year, very polite, kind of came in, engaged in more, almost I think with staff than he did with students. And it was always about what we did on the weekends, favorite restaurants and cars. And then with cars, that's his passion. So there was a rainy day, it adds to the drama of the story, I get it. But it was a rainy day and we were at dismissal and one of our students noticed that she had a flat tire. So we were kind of in a pinch. So I love all of our staff members, they started to jump into action and Sean had beat them all up to the car already and was, Jason was one of them. He was dictating to all of the male staff, okay, you grab me this, you go over there. He's on his hands and knees changing the tire and realized that this girl also needed some patchwork done. So he got her all set up, put her in the flap, I'm sorry, the spare, and then was scared for her to drive home because it was not good weather and it wasn't a great situation. So he offered for her to follow him to his house, made sure that her parents approved, followed her to his house and then he patched the tire up, fixed it all up and then sent her on her way and made sure that he like was communicating with her that she got home safely. And I just thought that was such, I mean, that was, no one asked him to do it. He enjoyed it. I think he really enjoyed bossing Mr. Gorney around. I know I do, so I'm sure he enjoyed that part of it. But that's just Sean, I feel like, in a nutshell. And then I found out afterwards while we were discussing this at a team meeting that he has actually offered to help out with some of our staff members' cars before just because he was like, oh, I just like extra practice and if you ever need anything. So that's just him, kind of an old soul. I really wish he could have been here tonight because I'm just so proud of him. We miss him already, it's only been a few weeks, but Sean Loceano from Oak Forest High School is our Keeper of the Light. Jason Pearson, come on up. Hello, hi. All right, Jason Pearson has been part of our Delta Academy program since the first day that we opened our doors. When we were actually assembling our team and trying to figure out who we were going to bring over, it was not a hesitation. I was very excited to be able to bring Jason on board. I had worked with him briefly at Tinley Park High School. I was not the one who actually had not, we're using Kelsey's nomination. So I'm going to read from her because I also have a couple of things that I would just like to thank you for. Jason Pearson, I don't, I mean, him and Sean, if you guys hung out together, I don't know if the world would stop turning or what. Jason's never had a bad day. He's always energetic, he's always smiling. Even when I know what's going on behind the scenes, the students would never, you couldn't tell. His energy is through the roof, his optimism is through the roof and he truly makes, I know he makes my life easier on a daily basis, but I know that he just totally amplifies the experience that our students have while they have with us. So I'm grateful for that. Kelsey is also very grateful. So Kelsey Nealon is one of our chief teachers and she says, Jason is a bright light at Delta Academy each and every day. No matter the day Jason is having in his personal and professional life, he always has a cheery smile on his face. Jason is the energy that everyone needs in their life. His presence makes all of our days and lives better. His goofy personality has been known to dress up as Harry Potter on occasion. Yet stern expectations and high level of standards for all make him the greatest of educators. He is my better half and I simply would not be able to do, be, do what I do and be the best that I can for my students without him in my life. Jason is one of a kind and truly a keeper of the light. For that, thank you.
Good evening, everyone, from Hillcrest High School, Ron Towner. My staff member isn't here and she said she was going to be here, so I'm hoping she shows up. But we'll go with our student, Daisy Elsens. Daisy is a junior at Hillcrest right now and in much the same vein as Daniel from Tinley Park, Daisy got a lot of nominations for this, this month. So I'm just going to read a few of them. On a personal note, I see Daisy in the hallway often, always, good morning, Mr. Towner, good afternoon, hope you're having a good day, just the most pleasant student and a joy to be around. You know, sometimes hallways can get a little hectic and there's always a little ray of sunshine with Daisy here. Mrs. DeForty and Mrs. Youngberg wrote, Daisy is a junior that excels both in and out of the classroom. She took on a very challenging workload this year where she manages both honors and AP courses. Outside of the school day, she's heavily involved in sports and clubs. She's in band, diversity club, student council, snowball and wrestling. She will be our senior class president next year and she's dependable and motivated. She's also kind, caring and brings a positive energy to any room. She's very deserving of this award. Mrs. Osborne said, Daisy is a beautiful young woman with a beautiful soul. She's hardworking, kind, helpful and a true joy to teach. Daisy's the kind of student who comes around very rarely and makes you grateful that you chose your teaching profession. It's an honor and a privilege to teach her and to know her. And Mrs. Caramella said, accountable, determined, puts in the work, helpful, team player, insightful, positive, but most importantly, she has heart and the inner light from her heart shines through in everything Daisy does. She has a great leadership capabilities and I've seen firsthand how she works with her peers. There are countless conversations that we've shared where she puts a smile on my face and I feel honored to be a small part of her journey as she grows into an incredible young woman. May the light from within her continue to help guide her journey. Congratulations Daisy on this well-deserved honor. Okay, Ms. Battles isn't here, but I got to talk about her. She's our security guard. She's at the front desk when you enter. So anyone that's been to Hillcrest recently, she's the first face you see. When I first got to Hillcrest, we talked, I talked with security and with our support staff and things like that about customer service. I used her as the model. This is how we treat people when they come to visit Hillcrest High School. She's amazing. She's also our eye in the sky, so she's got all the cameras up and you'll hear Officer Battles get on the camera, there's something going on in Blue Hall, we got to go check that out. She lets us know all the time, she's watching everything. And she, most importantly, has always got my back. We had a situation where a parent came in, we'll say that he was a little agitated, okay? And I'm having the discussion with him sort of in the vestibule. I didn't know Officer Battles was standing behind me and his voice got a little elevated and she comes up from behind and says, you cannot talk to our principal like that. She put it right in his spot. Ms. Battles is awesome and she absolutely deserves to be our Keeper of the Light, so thank you.
Hello, good evening, from Oak Forest High School. I want to welcome up both Fiona and Ms. Pecca. Fiona, as everyone's been discussing tonight, we are so blessed in this district. You know, we're only recognizing a few students tonight, but, but our students are phenomenal and it's great to recognize some of these specialists. So Fiona, Fiona really is, you know, like that twinkly star, right? As people are talking about positive, our students that are positive. Fiona's a little bit quieter, on the quieter side. So let me read to you what, oh, Ms. Pecca had to say. Fiona has made an exceptional impact on Oak Forest High School community over the four years she's been here. I first met Fiona when she was a sophomore looking to join new clubs and activities after a year of remote learning and I've been so honored to watch her grow into such a kind, supportive and compassionate leader in school. As the president of Interact Club, Fiona has been a role model for younger students and is the embodiment of our motto, service above self. Fiona is constantly looking for ways to make others feel a part of Bengal Nation and goes above and beyond to make our school an inclusive and inviting environment. There is no greater example of this than when she planned and facilitated our very first Bengal Olympics with the Proud Program, which was a huge success. We are so lucky to have had Fiona as such an integral part of our school for the last four years and I know she will continue to do amazing things in her future. She's attending the University of Kentucky and she will be very missed at Oak Forest. So congratulations. Congratulations Fiona.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pecca. Now if I can invite Mr. Dunn up here. As Dr. Sikora mentioned, Mr. Dunn is retiring. And when we were talking about Keepers of the Light, one of my colleagues over there, Mr. Gomez, said, well, it makes perfect sense for us to recognize Mr. Dunn because he literally has been keeping the lights on for a long time. So I'm just going to read a little bit about what I wrote and that is that Dan and I have worked together for thirty years, believe it or not, I know we look much too young for that to be possible. But during that time, Dan has been my colleague for many years, he was my boss for many years, but most importantly, he's been my friend. The entire Oak Forest High School community is better because Dan is always looking out for what is best for Oak Forest High School. He's wise and we will miss that wisdom. I didn't say old, wise. We're thankful for his service, his dedication, his steadfastness and his dad jokes. I want to thank Dan especially for his work the last few years mentoring and supporting our new administrators. For this and for so many countless things, we say thank you to Dan. We want to wish him well in his retirement and we pray for many, many long, healthy retirement years. And Oak Forest will always be a second home for Dan and we're going to keep the lights on for you, Dan. Thank you, thank you. So it's probably very appropriate that we move from Keepers of the Light to certainly recognizing some Oak Forest and presenting to the board some of the best of Oak Forest. It's really been an exceptionally exciting year for us watching some of our graduates. You probably noticed a very tall gentleman as he walked in here this evening. What we want to do is recognize some of our students, some of our graduates who went from Keepers of the Light to really being in the spotlight this past year. We actually had three graduates and I mentioned them at some of the board meetings as they were competing during the season. But we had Robbie Avila, Jason Kent and Janay Kent, who are all recent grads at Oak Forest High School. And they were really able to do some tremendous things this year. We just want to thank all of them. Jason and Janay unable to be with us tonight, but Robbie, he made the trip over for us so that we can sort of celebrate him tonight and everything that this season meant and what he's meant for. So let me get out of the way. and everything that this season meant and what he's meant for. So, let me get out of the way. And Mr. Boniface, of course, has the video.
One is my high school year, winning my regional championship in my high school, and then the second one is seeing my sister commit to LSU. You know, it's a blessing to see her achieve her dreams and being able to see her play at the highest level and win his division one basketball. We definitely support each other's journey, you know? We do it through training. We work out together all the time when we're home. And by, it's been so hard this year, because we're both in college, but, you know, when she has a game, I got my whole LSU gear on. I tell nobody to talk to me. I'm locked into my sister's game, and I'm her number one fan. No matter, I don't care what nobody says. I believe she's the best wearing this in the world. I'm on paycheck on it.
He surprised me when he came. I didn't know he was coming, and he came, and biggest cheerleader, like, seriously. Like, number one fan, loud, and the quiet, the, the gym will be super quiet, and he will be extra, extra loud. But yeah, I didn't know he was coming, and I was so nervous, and I wondered.
Three plus.
Now, left wing Kent, bounce pass, left block, Demora doubled, so she's back out to Kent on the left wing. Therese back to Kent for three, and she drained it on the left wing. Well, got it Therese, who got it back to Kent. She, she reset and fired it off.
The entire starting five entered the transfer portal for Indiana State earlier this week. Several big-time suitors lined up to talk to the ISU players, and now one of those sycamores who entered the portal has his new landing spot. Jason Kent told On3 Sports that he is committed to play for the Tech, oh, this final year of eligibility. Kent landed on the NBC second team in his second season with the Sycamores, was also named to the NBC All-Defensive Team. Jason led the team in field goal percentage, double-doubles, and averaged nearly fourteen points per game. He'll spend his final season of college basketball in the SEC with Texas.
Now Robbie Avila, AKA the College Jokic, could be on his way to the transfer portal. Avila attended Oak Forest High School in the Chicago suburbs, where he was the all-time scoring leader at the school. And while playing there, he was known for his same-place style he is so well-known for today. His recruiting process, however, was slowed down by the pandemic. But still, Avila earned two stars next to his name, was a top-ten player at Illinois, and top-sixty at his position, averaging twenty-four points his senior year. Receiving offers from Richmond, Appalachian State, DePaul, Toledo, among many others, but ultimately committed to Indiana State. And as a freshman with the Sycamores, Avila started in twenty-nine games, averaging nearly eleven points and four rebounds, enough to earn himself all-freshman team honors for the conference. This year in his second season, he has played even better and made himself a recognizable name among college basketball fans all around the nation. Averaging seventeen points, six rebounds, and four assists, and everyone can't get enough of Robbie Avila. His playstyle is similar to Jokic. He passes and shoots like a guard. He's able to use his size to score and rebound like a big man. And because of that, he's earned some legendary nicknames.
What, what makes these three so special is that certainly they've been under those hot spotlights this last year, and especially Robbie. I don't know, all of you that are on social media, I mean, everybody was talking about Robbie, they were talking about the goggles. And so, a lot of, a lot of the, the details that we filled in by Mr. Mamsky, who certainly worked with all of these, and a special thank you to Mr. Towner, too, for those, that strong athletic program we have going on.
Well, thank you. So, obviously, you saw the videos, and, and these three athletes are probably best known for what they've done on the court. I've been very fortunate as a basketball coach and an athletic director to spend a lot of time with them, and I've got to work with them a lot. And, and I know that they represent us very well with what they do on the court, but the reason that we're representing, or the reason we're celebrating Janay and Jason and Robbie today is more about what they do for us off the court. They're consistently coming back and giving back to our community. They consistently mentor our current students, our junior high students, our graduates who are trying to make college decisions. They've been through this process, and it's an, it's an interesting time to be in college athletics, as, as everybody knows. And they've navigated it with grace and, and, and just in the way that can make us proud at Oak Forest High School and our district. They, a little special shout-out for Robbie. For those of you that don't know, in December, Robbie took the time on his own, he came up with this idea. He approached me about it early in the school year, but he purchased shoes for the entire Oak Forest varsity basketball team. Just did that on his own as a way of giving back, because that's the type of person that he is. And I think that, you know, I've been very fortunate that I've got to spend a lot of time with, with, with these guys, and I think that their journey has brought a lot of joy to our community. And I guess the biggest compliment I can give them and the reason that they're here tonight is because, as good as they are as basketball players, they're better people. They're better representatives of our school and our district and our community. They're proud to be members of our community. They consistently go above and beyond when they're interviewed nationally, national broadcasts to say that they're from Oak Forest. They're not from Chicago, they're not from Illinois, they're from Oak Forest, and, and that means a lot. They might not even know that that means a lot to us, but that, that means a lot, because that's, they're, they're genuinely proud of where they're at. So, I think in a school district with many, many great, great people, and, and, you know, a lot of alum that do a lot of great things, I think they're at the top of the list in terms of representing us and, and just, you know, showing that what the best that our district has to offer. So, Robbie, congratulations. Thank you.
There's a little Bengal token for you, so thank you so much for everything that you've done for us. And thank you, certainly, just wanted to get you in front of the board and certainly be right. Oh, all right. Look at this.
I'm used to it, so.
Yeah, you're tall enough. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Battles. She's here. She made it. I already spoke about you, but, no, it's great. Your customer service, your, 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 the first face people see when they come to Hillcrest, and you're always serve people with a smile. But you make sure they follow the rules and that they're doing things the right way, and you always have my back, and I appreciate it, so that's why you're our keeper of the light.
Thank you.
We are moving on to our agenda item three point four, our FOIA request.
Thank you. Before we move on, keepers of the light, congratulations by all means. You're welcome to stay, but just know the board will not be offended if you take this time to leave, too. We're gonna just have a seat with our regular business. With that being said, moving on to FOIA requests. Congratulations to all of you. Okay, since the last regular board meeting, we received the following Freedom of Information Act request. Jared Peepandring from the Illinois Department of Employment Security requests copies of public records that include job tiles, job titles, wages, department powers, work. All employees of Tinley Park High School has done the quarterly contribution report for the payroll that included November twelfth, twenty twenty-three. This request has been completed. Mariah Jones requests the current salary of administrative assistants of the superintendent. Years within the role of the administrative assistant to the superintendent, stipend amount or additional pay received for acting as the Board of Education Recording Secretary, the total compensation for the administrative assistant to the superintendent. This request has been completed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any board member reports?
I just want to congratulate a hundred important students across our district who received recognition from the United Nations Association of USA. It's based on a civic engagement award, so we had a couple of students who received an ambassador award. They did a hundred hours of community service. Some students did forty hours, other students did twenty. Funny story real quick. I was at work, I'm scrolling Facebook, and I open the article, and I'm reading the names. I'm like, hey, I know that kid. So, one very special student to me was on that list. So, I want to congratulate those recipients for their efforts in servant leadership and civic engagement.
I'd just like to say I was able to attend three out of the four senior honors nights and all the graduation ceremonies. Congratulations to all of our department seniors. I know you all do very well in life. Thank you to our school administrations for putting on excellent programs. I only regret that two of our schools had senior honors nights on the same night, so I couldn't attend all four. Thank you.
Any other board member report? All right, moving on, thank you very much to new business. Item four point one, bills, addendum to bills, payroll, and CDS bills.
The items for four point one have been reviewed and are being recommended for full board approval.
So, move. Second, moved by Ms. Gleason, second by Ms. Motley. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mrs. Motley?
Aye.
Mrs. List?
Aye.
Ms. Lot?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Mr. Wickholm?
Aye.
Mrs. Russler?
Aye.
Item four point two?
Item four point two is the ratification letter supporting the extension of Oak Forest Tiff District Number Six, signed on April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. This item is being recommended for full board approval.
So, move. Second. Moved by Ms. Gleason, second by Mr. Wickholm. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Wickholm?
Aye.
Mrs. List?
Aye.
Ms. Lot?
Aye.
Mrs. Motley?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Mrs. Russler?
Aye.
Item four point three?
Item four point three is the Fall 2024 Athletic Fid results totaling one thousand six hundred and thirty-two dollars and four cents. This item is being recommended for full board approval.
So, moved.
Second. Moved by Mr. Wickholm, second by Ms. Gleason. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Wickholm?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mrs. List?
Aye.
Ms. Lot?
Aye.
Mrs. Motley?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Mrs. Russler?
Aye.
Item four point four?
Item four point four is the Fiscal Year 2024 Audit Engagement Letter with Whitley. This item is being recommended for full board approval.
So, move.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Gleason, second by Mr. Wickholm. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Wickholm?
Aye.
Mrs. List?
Aye.
Ms. Lot?
Aye.
Mrs. Motley?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Mrs. Russler?
Aye.
Item four point five?
Item four point five is the Athletico Contract Renewal for Fiscal Year 2025. This item is being recommended for full board approval.
So, move. Second. Moved by Ms. Motley, second by Ms. Gleason. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mrs. Motley?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mrs. List?
Aye.
Ms. Lot?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Mr. Wickholm?
Aye.
Mrs. Russler?
Aye.
Item four point six, Dr. Williams?
Thank you, Mrs. Russler. Four point six is the School Year Twenty-Four Calendar Abatement. We did not use any emergency days. Therefore, our final day of school is this Friday, May twenty-fourth. Superintendent is recommending the abated calendar for full board approval.
So, moved.
Second. Moved by Mr. Wickholm, second by Ms. Lot. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Wickholm?
Aye.
Mrs. Lot?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mrs. List?
Aye.
Mrs. Motley?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Mrs. Russler?
Aye.
Item four point seven?
Four point seven is overnight field trip request for Hillcrest High School's cheerleading and football to attend camps this summer. No lost school days, and these are being recommended for full board approval.
So, moved.
Second. Moved by Mr. Wickholm, second by Ms. Gleason. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Wickholm?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mrs. List?
Aye.
Ms. Lot?
Aye.
Mrs. Motley?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Mrs. Russler?
Aye.
Item four point eight?
Four point eight is our memo of agreement, memo of understanding between South suburban college and District Two Twenty-Eight for our welding program at night. We wanted to make some adjustments to that MOU since our first year was very successful. So, the changes are the removal of specific course dates, that we would leave it off the memo and that we would just put the dates on the course syllabus, including holidays and, and breaks. We increased the maximum capacity from eighteen to twenty, because we can house twenty students in our welding booths. And then, just to adjust the specific dates for faculty training, to leave it open-ended to a Saturday either prior to the spring or the fall term. The superintendent is recommending these changes for full board approval.
So, moved.
Second. Moved by Mr. Wickholm, second by Ms. Gleason. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Wickholm?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mrs. List?
Aye.
Ms. Lot?
Aye.
Mrs. Motley?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Mrs. Russler?
Aye.
Item four point nine, Dr. Sikora?
Thank you, Mrs. Russler. Item four point nine is our IASB Annual Dues for next school year. This membership provides services including publications, lobbying, concentration with staff, reduced fees for services such as executive search, press policy services, and district and regional workshops, and the annual conference. Division meetings provide opportunities for professional development, peer recognition, participation, and association governance, and learning about the IASB resources. Sponsored programs often allow districts to save more money annually than they would pay in dues. New services and programs are added as the district needs arise. Attached is the twenty-four, twenty-five renewals in the amount of nine thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars for the dues. This is no increase in dues from last school year, and I'm recommending this for full board approval.
So, move. Second. Moved by Ms. Gleason, second by Ms. Motley. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mrs. Motley?
Aye.
Mrs. List?
Aye.
Ms. Lot?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Mr. Wickholm?
Aye.
Mrs. Russler?
Aye.
Item four point ten?
Item four point ten is our Press Policy Services subscription for next school year. Press is the IASB policy and procedure information and updating service. This subscription service has two components, the Policy Reference Manual, Encyclopedia of Sample Policies and Procedures Legally Reference and Footnotes, and Periodic Update Issues. Press is an essential tool for keeping the board policy and administrative procedure manuals up to date. Both the Policy Reference Manual and the Periodic Update Issue are web-published. I'm recommending this item for full board approval.
So, moved.
Second. Moved by Mr. Wickholm, second by Ms. Motley. Any discussion?
I have a question. Is, is this part of IASB, or is it more? I'm just curious why it isn't part of the overall dues for IASB?
Yeah, they are separate services. In this case, we get, this is when we'll make those recommendations. We have the, both the lawyer review, and then I will then give recommendations to policy. Most of them are footnotes. I think they do work hand-in-hand with Press, but IASB is, is separate from Press.
So, the policy recommendations don't come from IASB? They come from?
Well, it depends. There's some that will say specifically right from ISB, and then there's some that will say from member districts. So, there's people that are both IASB member districts and not, and Press can apply, take them both.
Any other questions? Roll call, please. Mr. Wickholm?
Aye.
Mrs. Motley?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mrs. List?
Aye.
Ms. Lot?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Mrs. Russler?
Aye.
Moving on to personnel recommendations. Dr. Goggins?
Under retirements, Ed Lopowski, Kathleen O'Connor, Teresa Conley, Mary Rose Furnas, Wendy Bunkus, Mike Casso, and Tammy Schultz. Under resignation, Marisha Matthews, Larissa Parker, Samantha Dorman, Jacob Rossborough, and Michelle Berry. Under lead, Ziveth, Floris Ramirez, Brittany Osmolik, Dana Comathus, and Lynn Fitzgerald. Under employment, Brian Proctor, Maximiliano Boiso, Valerie Navarez, Kale Benoit, Heather Castaneda, Cole Griffin, LaBaron Hull, Bethal Hindi, Zachary Sadik, and Kathy Saja. Under change of position is Paulina Zaragoza, and also the, the approval of the retirement contract for Wendy Bunkus. These are being recommended to the full board for approval.
So, move. Second. Moved by Ms. Gleason, second by Ms. List. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mrs. List?
Aye.
Ms. Lot?
Aye.
Mrs. Motley?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Mr. Wickholm?
Aye.
Mrs. Russler?
Aye.
All right, moving on to our public comments. Stephen Hogan?
Good evening, Board of Education for Two Twenty-Eight. Allow me to introduce myself again. Fifteen years ago, I presented a different program in terms of how to handle homework in the district. And fifteen years ago, we weren't doing anything that we're doing today. And it's just, it's interesting how it just has transpired to where we find ourselves today. And that was my, my first year of instruction in the district fifteen years ago. I'm a fifteen-year employee of the district, working here in terms of teaching physics here for Oak Forest High School, eighteen years in total. So, things have changed since I've started here. I just want to reintroduce myself. As of today, I am the brand-new JFA president for the three-hundred-and-eighty-member association that we find ourselves within Two Twenty-Eight here. And I just want to state some quick comments about in terms of the And I just want to state some quick comments about in terms of the past, in terms of the sort of the relationship between the association and the administration. In the past, as sometimes we've known that we've sort of disagreed on some aspects. But what was really kind of bringing up and kind of, I think, really got to a point of understanding was like the last round of negotiations that we had. We still had some disagreements here and there, but like having these discussions between the association and the administration, we got to a really healthy mindset of just problem solving. And I think just like looking around to some of the individuals who were part of that process, Dr. Goggins, Brittany Morrison, Dr. Boswell and Dr. Sikora. I think we could all agree that that was just so much, you know, more healthy for our relationship. And I think it was kind of a learning experience for all of us that like we can just sit down and just have a good conversation, talking for what's best for students and how can we achieve those goals. And if there's anything that like I could bring from my perspective as the president of the 380 members that I represent or any faculty, please don't hesitate to reach out to me. I do appreciate as well, in terms of flexibility, I've had some personal family emergencies during last May that Dr. Goggins was very flexible to, including my building principal, Jane Dempsey. Including this May that I've had to do some sort of flexibility due to family commitments. And I do appreciate that the administration has been very, very flexible whenever the employees need it in this district and that feels great. Inclusive of that, this week, through my position as I'm actually one of the executive committee members for IEA, I was appointed by Al Lorenz, who is the IA president, to this work-study group to try to improve the assessment procedure for the state as we transition to the, from the SAT to the ACT. That there's some disconnect happening. And I had to have leave yesterday for two hours because these are policymakers across the entire state who don't necessarily are working against like a school schedule. And Dr. Sikora allowed me to have leave to actually partake in that. And I was just one of three IA members through this 30-member policy group to actually start the groundwork of trying to make some adjustments to the state assessment. So I do appreciate that as well, so thank you. If there's anything that I can do in terms of like sort of implementing new, great things for our district, please don't hesitate to reach out to me and I'll leave you my business card.
Any other public comments? Alright, if there are no further public comments, our announcements are as follows. The next committee's whole meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, June 11th at 6:45 PM at Tinley Park High School. And our next regular board meeting is Tuesday, June 18th at 7:00 PM at Tinley Park High School. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Mr. Whitcomb, second by Ms. Motley, all votes in favor?
Aye.
Thank you guys, importantly.